Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. It's we the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes in the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, council provided with revised agenda which included a council discussion item regarding veterans in the area.
Do you want to approve amended agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Presentations, proclamations, acknowledgements. We have employee recognition this evening. We have two employees being honored this evening. Derek Johnson is unable to attend tonight's council meeting. Derek was a, served as a firefighter for over ten years. The city of Elko Newmarket recognizes Derek for his dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city and the rest of the fire district. And we also have Martin or Marty Deutsch. Marty started with the city of Elko and Newmarket working part-time as the only employee in the utility department in 1987.
Wow.
Marty continues to work in public works department as a maintenance two. The city appreciates Marty's thirty-plus years of service to the city. He has been talking to residents to answer questions.
Come on up Marty.
We're gonna make you work for it.
Speech, speech.
Patrick just arrived.
He knew he was struggling.
He doesn't like it.
He doesn't like it.
Hold on.
Sandy's coming too.
Wait, wait.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
You can go away.
There we go.
Don't get jealous Patrick.
See, I gotta get really close.
Should we have to see it too?
You two look so handsome.
Congratulations.
The longest-serving employee.
Wow.
You know Marty, now that you're here, you have to stay for the whole meeting. Now we get to the next item, annual organizational matters.
So, the entire council's been through this a couple times in the past, so really there's two portions to it. There are the items that are included in annual resident, which generally way to act in a positive way to those who are required to stand to the law. Most appointments will be done by a promotion and those are boards, committees, representatives, etc. So, I'll see if we're able to be married.
Let's see. Start with a newspaper, that's what you're going with. First, do we want to have the New Break Times again as a newspaper?
Yes.
I'm in favor of it. Do we need a motion on that?
No, that'll be, that'll be just inserted in for the resolution.
Okay, let's see then, this week, okay. And now we can get down to SJAPA. That's generally Tom and Steve.
Yep. And that's actually defined by the joint powers agreement and the bylaws for the installation as the city vice chair said.
Okey-dokey.
So, everybody okay with that? Sure. The joint regional training facility, same people?
Makes sense to be the same people.
I-35 Solutions Alliance?
I was officially sworn in as the vice chair this morning, so I think that means I need to be. Congratulations. So, yeah, so.
I'm on board.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, okay, we said, I asked last time.
You did ask last time.
But that was a, pretty much a no-brainer because we'd already discussed it, but make it official.
Yep.
The fire relief board.
I would love to stay on it again if it's all right with the rest of you.
Fine with me.
Fine with me.
It's fine with me. Let's see, let's see.
I will stay on it.
I would take it back.
I, no, I'll stay on it, it's fine. Now that I'm not as active with the chamber, that'll be just fine.
One question not related, you know, with regards to the fire relief, I know Bob's currently serving as representative of the fire district work group, do you want to keep that role, Mr. Mayor? Do you want to consolidate all the fire stuff? Would you like Kate to she's?
That would be fine.
I would be willing to take it on for sure.
So, we got the CCEC, Chamber of Commerce.
Staff had a question on this one with the change in format. This position was appointed annually when we were having separate of these little, the joint meetings, but now we're going to their meetings. Right now, we're in here teaming that on a regular basis. Our intent is if the council doesn't want to have somebody else that's specifically identified, we would just basically tap the council as necessary when it feels appropriate that we need council backing or council representative given the discussion at a particular time.
I like that idea.
That's.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, I mean, maybe have someone come when we do the EDA meetings for an update or something of that kind, but.
That would be a good, that would, that might be a good idea too.
But no need for a regular month or every other week deal.
Or even if there's, even, or even if the council designates, okay, if staff needs somebody to come, this is who's gonna go, so we don't have to wait for a council meeting or do a.
Or do we fit it to the topic?
It might be dependent upon the topic.
I mean, so if we've got a person who's the EDA representative and you've got an EDA topic, it might make sense for that EDA person to go. If it's a community thing, it might make sense for the community.
And this is why we're looking for direction from the council, how do you want to handle that council?
I like the idea that.
I think it should be determined based on what the topic is, which one of us should go.
Yep, I agree.
And which one is available?
Right, but I don't think it should be a set.
I think whatever the topic is, it goes with, follows that person that specializes in that.
Yeah, provided, yeah. They can make it, okay. That's.
So, that's not gonna be regular appointments?
No. Project staff, that meeting is now moved to two o'clock on Tuesdays.
The week of council meetings.
Week of council meetings.
I like going to those, I would like to continue going to them unless someone else.
I've been going and I still kinda like it. There haven't been as many of them.
There haven't, it's been scaled back, but.
MVTA, I would like to continue as MVTA rep. I've got a pretty good relationship with everybody on the board, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with staying there. Okay, so that's staying too?
Scale, I would like to stay as scale because I have a feeling I could be secretary this year again. I'll be going to a small city.
I like being part of scale, but do we, do we really need to limit the number of people? Because isn't this already a posted?
Normally with scale, they're usually two elected officials does needs at a time of more regular basis, but anybody can go. We just need to know if there's gonna be more than two, so we can post it.
Or conversely, could you just, oh, you can't just always have it be posted that the potential could be, more of us could be there? Can't really do that?
I don't think in the last decade we've had more than two council people as.
Yeah, okay.
I like we're gonna have to sign up.
I would like, I, yes, second Friday of every month at seven thirty, I would love to go. And that puts three of us there.
So, then you could just probably post it that it's.
We could, yes. Well, it costs money to post things each time. I think we would just, we would post all the needs for the year.
Okay.
Could you clarify that for, for the scale is gonna be Mayor Crocker, and then are we going to have two alternates also? Okay. And Kate?
The beauty of having, the beauty of having any number of council people going is the networking that we can do there is unbelievable and.
Well, and it gives a lot of good perspective to come back to our city, you know, how different things relate in different ways, so I do like it. So, it sounds like we're in agreement. Unless Josh and Trish wanna come too, we can all just.
We all good, so.
Is there an alternative on MVTA, Bob? Alternative?
I'm staying.
Kate, just wanna make sure you get it.
Give me transit.
I'm actually going by the, clean here, but I'm fine. Let's see. MVTA, so now we're to the most important one, well, not the most important, but acting mayor.
I'd like to nominate Josh Berg.
I'll second.
Nominations are closed, all in favor? We're not gonna have any discussion. You don't have a say.
Yes, you do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Josh Berg is acting mayor.
I've sat here for three years. Change is good for everybody. Builds strength.
I'll have to miss a meeting this year. Okay, do they think that's a good one, right?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Gee, that was easy this year. We've been doing it as a group for a while.
That too.
Okay. Public comment, Commissioner Wolf.
Good evening, I thought maybe you'd done it already. I was out at Spring Lake Township and it took me longer to get here than I thought with the roads, so.
We held it just for you.
Until you got here, then the roads were fabulous.
They were actually pretty good.
Exactly.
But the county was, right?
You can even get around in our neighborhoods real easy.
So, anyhow, I got a couple of things today here. First of all, congratulations to Trish, she was nominated and elected for the I-35 vice chair position, and so she gets that for the whole year. Can't find my presentation, but anyhow, we're going through a process, we hired some architects to look at all of our space across the entire county, all of our, so we have our highway department, the judicial spot, the law enforcement, we've got the cap agency and the workforce center, we've got places all over. We're gonna take a look at it. We think at some point we're gonna put in a new, right in the front of the, front parking lot out there, we're gonna put a new building, and that's gonna house some health and human services, probably the workforce center people. We're gonna expand the judges area, because we're short, one or two judges there, they're all solid between criminals, I mean, they're coming from everywhere. We're carting people around all the time, you know, civil cases, you know, all kinds of stuff all the time, so they need some more space, they're bursting at the seams, and some of the mandates that the federal government have done with the man sure, you know, we hired six people for that, they're paying for those people, but we gotta find a spot for them. So, you know, it's always, you know, one thing or another. We've got a couple of big projects coming on this year. One of, note is out on forty-six and eighty-six on the, so the far southeast, we're gonna do a roundabout over that, and that's gonna be done this year. We got one, I don't know if you knew that or not, but, yeah, so, and then one sixty-nine and forty-one going towards Chaska there, we're still buying up land, and then towards the end of the year, we're gonna start getting that project going, and so by twenty, twenty twenty, you won't recognize it, I think Super America will be gone from that corner, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but that will be gone. What's that?
Which one?
That is the southeast corner of one sixty-nine and forty-one.
No.
So, there's a Holiday on one, done by where you turn for the Renaissance Fest if you went that way.
Yep, it is gone.
They will be gone, yeah, they're gonna, we're buying them out, we can't, you know, there're gonna be like some clover leaves and some overpasses and stuff, so that's a big deal. Forty-two and thirteen up by the Cub Foods, Target, that corner, that's all gonna get redone down to Boone Avenue and down to Quebec, they're gonna have permanent stoplights in there. So, what else? We're gonna start up, you know, getting the property and getting all the surveying done for the thirteen and twenty-one, and, you know, so there's gonna be a lot of things going on this year. We're, we would like to, I mean, one of my initiatives, and I probably, I'm certain I won't be around in two thousand and forty, but we wanna be debt-free by two thousand and forty, and so that, we're not paying, you know, whatever is a million, two, three million in interest every year, we can either tax less or give back more, and, you know, it's, you know, I don't, I'm not a big fan, I know there's a banker in here, but I, I don't like paying interest on stuff. It's just that's.
Why do you hate banks?
I don't, I don't hate banks, my wife works for Wells Fargo, just for the record, but, I don't know, it just, it's, and you're gonna pay for it anyhow, and I know that, you know, future people will use things and stuff, but, you know, it's, we just wanna have it, we've kinda set up a nice model where we only are gonna raise our levy by less than the growth and the consumer price index, so the CPI, so this year it was three point five or six, and we raised by three point one nine, so we're a little under, so we always wanna stay under that point and not have these spikes and stuff, so.
Is that like an adopted policy?
It's not really, it's not in concrete, no, because as you know, with this stuff, things can happen.
So, this is something that as new commissioners come on, they can say, well, you don't like that?
That's what I had when I ran my first time back in eight and one, this, that's what I said, growth and inflation, that's it, that's what I would, you know, because then it's a model that is sustainable, you know, if you look at the state where they're, they're raising their budget by eight or ten percent, it's like, well, wait a minute, if we're only, the CPI is only two and you're growing by three, it's an economic model that's destined to fail, in my opinion, I mean, right? I mean, it's just numbers you can't keep going forever, so anyhow, that's why some people are leaving the state, you know, seven thousand of the richest, ten thousand have left to go somewhere else and pay taxes in Florida or South Dakota. That's, that's not just a myth, that's a true story, right? They've left, so.
My, I guess my larger concern is that ten years from now, five years from now, the commission change is over.
Yes.
That's really, that's not concrete anywhere, that's not something that's.
And we can never bind the future board, as you guys can't either, so, I mean, that's how it works, but, you know, when it comes to scale, you know, Bob hit it on the head, you know, the networking you guys do and whatever is, is a great thing, when I got on, it was just one person that would sign the scale, and I said, well, jeez, like, can I go? And then someone else said, well, yeah, can I go too? And, well, boy, that'd be tough, you know, that's an open meeting, Bob, so they just posted and said, at any time, we may have three to five or less, well, city council or commissioners at that meeting. We almost always go, tomorrow I think one won't be there, so.
It's, it's the best thing in the world to try to lobby county commissioners for something you want.
You know, and I always say to people, you know, when, you know, I do these classes for kids all over the county about Scott County government, I say, don't get to know your representatives, your commissioners, your city council when you have a problem. Get to know them right away, go and see them a number of times, and then they'll, oh, yeah, Josh, I, yeah, I've met you four or five, yeah, yeah, what can I help you with? Well, now it's easier, now it's not just, you came out of the woodwork and said, not in my backyard, right? So, that's what I always tell people, so anyhow, that's all I have tonight, so congratulations again to Trish to.
You're welcome, Tom.
Right close to the top, so.
Can I ask a question on the forty-six and eighty-six roundabouts going in?
Yeah.
Traffic-wise, was there, it had to been a, I'm guessing, a pretty big disparity from what we see on two and ninety-one?
Yeah, in fact, there was a, there was a death there here in the last month or two.
It's probably more with crashes than with, when.
Okay, so it's not so much traffic, it's more just.
It's, not just bumps and dings, but big injuries and deaths.
I've responded to two fatalities out there in twenty seventeen. I'm not arguing, I just, we're gonna get ball peppered with questions.
I'm, yeah, I know, I'm sure, I, yeah, but, but that was, that's the answer on that, yeah, it's.
That's the biggest driving factor in deciding where to put them, is severity of crashes and number of crashes.
So, if my drivers weren't as safe as they are and watch as close.
You know, we do have the demolition derby thing going on.
Just let some of those cars go.
We need to mess with numbers.
We had a lot of concern out there from the farmers that, you know, the equipment, you know, when they first start making these things, you know, they're.
Yeah, to get them through.
And now those things are like, they just have to go down a field one time because they're what, six hundred feet wide or something like that, so it's a.
Yeah, but they can't come across a bridge.
Yeah. So, it's like, but that's, I've heard a lot of concerns about, you know, getting the stuff around those, and that's, and semis don't like them either, you know.
That would be feedback from Supervisor Moen, would it?
What's that?
Supervisor Moen, feedback on getting equipment through intersections?
Oh, yeah, oh. It actually was him. She saw my camera, darn it.
Don't worry, don't worry, we will, we will send him a copy. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
That's perfect.
Any changes to the consent agenda?
Motion for consent agenda?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. No public hearings, general business.
The only item we have on general business tonight is the scheduled fees. Normally the scheduled fees is an element on consent agenda that's fairly straightforward, unless the council has, wants to take a different approach to the recommendation of pull-in. However, there's one element that we do need council discussion direction on tonight. If you recall from staff report, that was a theme for direction with regards to the investigation fee related to gambling premise permits. We have recommended a reduction in it based on an evaluation of what our actual costs are related to it, but we have been approached by one of our local nonprofit organizations who each, which has to be paid on an annual basis, and they've asked the council to consider not charging it to the local organization since most of them make, well, they, they have organization that makes voluntary contributions to the city, and the city ordinance does require that they contribute a percentage of their net proceeds to the city for a special fund, so.
What fee was this, I'm sorry?
Basically, the background investigation fee on an annual basis associated with the license.
Is that something that we can waive for specific organizations?
You have the equal application, so really the only organizations that's subject to are eligible nonprofit organizations that can conduct charitable gambling, they're the only ones we do, so you're really talking fire relief, Elko baseball, the sports associations that have pull tabs in town, so they're all, they're all local nonprofits as we define local nonprofits.
Are you talking about the fifty-dollar fee?
So, what is the net impact, I mean?
Two hundred dollars a year.
So, the background check has to be done, no matter what, they just want the city to.
Yep, I mean, from overall impact, it's not significant either way, it's just a philosophical decision whether or not you consider the city user fee, or you take the approach that, well, these are organizations in the community that are doing good, and they also contribute, make contributions to the city, because council's aware of, or instance, the fire relief who made the initial request, what their annual donations are to the city directly voluntarily, not required by ordinance, is many, 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 many times the fee.
It's such a small amount, I have no issue waiving it, they're nonprofit organizations, I mean, if as a city we can't support that, then.
I, I mean, I disagree to the extent of, I mean, you do one for one, you'd have to do it for everybody.
Correct.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't.
But the only ones that can do the gambling are the nonprofits, right? So, isn't that doing it for everybody?
Well, are we talking about just all nonprofits across the board?
No, we're talking.
We're just talking about those that can do gambling.
Just the ones that can do gambling, but other, but other nonprofits could do gambling.
No, well, yes, the ones that do, what we're saying is any, or the only organizations that can do this type of gambling are.
That can do the gambling are nonprofit.
Nonprofit organizations that are eligible due to charitable gambling.
Right.
Ergo.
Ergo.
You're giving the break to everybody.
Right.
Because the only people that can do it are the nonprofits.
Yeah, I guess that's.
So, it's equitable.
Right.
How much of the hundred-dollar gambling, and I know, and I'm saying this knowing what the answer's gonna be, we have our fee set to pay for the time and the costs and everything, but, and, is that hundred dollars cover? It covers what, the time and the effort to process the permit, but does it really cost a hundred dollars? So, if we still, if they still pay for the gambling permit of a hundred dollars, will it still cover our?
We're just talking the investigative fee, right?
No, no, I understand, but they're still paying the hundred-dollar gambling permit, so.
So, does that hundred?
Oh, they don't have to do that?
You can't leave the charge. That's a separate.
But they do have to donate five percent back to the city, correct?
Yes, so the ordinance requires that organizations that do charitable gambling in town must donate five percent of their net proceeds to the city, those dollars however are, have to go into a special fund that is under some statutory restrictions as to how the dollars can be used. The, historically, the only organization, all the organizations do it, but historically the only organization that makes voluntary contributions beyond that is the fire relief. Everybody else, pretty much historically, except for what I would say, rare occasions donates what's required by ordinance and no more to the city for city items or improvements to parks and things like that. The fire relief has always been extremely generous. That being said, the fire relief's net proceeds relative to the other organizations is dramatically high as well.
Fire relief, I think last year total, the city got over a hundred thousand dollars.
To who requested this? Which one of the nonprofits?
Fire relief.
Fire relief, fire relief, I don't have a problem with, it's just broadening out nonprofit organizations, you know, a lot of different things, and it's.
Well, I don't, I don't think that what's being requested is to waive all fees for all nonprofit organizations.
No, it's the background check fee.
Just for this particular purpose.
Right.
And I believe there's only four in town.
Yep, now as we grow, that will likely increase. But I, hopefully, as we grow, those organizations will.
If you have a hundred, you're talking five thousand dollars.
Correct, if we had organizations making, even if it's the five percent minimum, you would think that those revenues would also go up as well.
So, let's flip it, I mean, could we incentivize the people, more organizations to come and start up by waiving something like this, so we're encouraging?
For fifty dollars, no. So, so even in talking, so, in talking with the relief, their point was, it's not like on the books, it has a lot of meaning, it's the, in their mind, it's the principal thing, we make huge, we do all, we do all this good in the community, and we make all these contributions, and we gotta pay fifty bucks to allow us to be able to do that.
But, I mean, it's, it's, it's not that we're, they, we still have to do it because we're required by state law or whatever it is, so, I mean, maybe it's something we need to.
we're required by state law or whatever it is, so I mean, maybe it's something we need to change at the state legislative level that, you know, we're still eating that cost then.
Right. Well, our, we, we could choose not to do background checks. I wouldn't recommend that, but we could choose not to do it. What it really comes down to is, the background check, is that a cost of doing business or is it a user fee? It's really just the philosophical view of, of the cost of doing that.
And, and I guess I would argue it's a cost to the business that's doing it because, you know, and most of the time, the, whether it's the Department of Health, the, they don't pay for those background checks, it's the businesses that are applying to be licensed that also pay for licensing fees, registration fees and everything else. They also have to get their background checks done at themselves, the board members, their staff, and nobody eats that cost for them.
But, again, it's two hundred bucks. I, so I mean, I, I mean, we're making a stink out of two hundred.
Budget every year for the four nonprofits and actually, for the one, you know, it's not that big a deal and, if we get more, it's something that we can change in a, in a year, what, if it ever gets to that point. And what happens if they don't pass the background checks?
We don't issue the license.
So, it's, it's, I don't think it's that, you know.
I'm not gonna, I, I, I'm fine with, with everyone else decides, look, it's not that much money, it's not worth arguing about. I, it makes me uncomfortable setting a precedent, you can't, it's not something you can walk back. Um, I mean, theoretically, yes, you can, but you really can't. But, yeah, I'm happy to go along with the rest.
Why can't, why couldn't you walk that one?
Cause all of a sudden, you have twelve, you have twenty nonprofits in town and it's really becoming a financial consideration of the city and we now approach those nonprofits and say, "We're reinstituting this fee again." That's, you couldn't theory do that, but it's not gonna be a very popular thing to do. And now we're still eating the cost of the background checks for anyone.
What we could do at that point is just require them to supple, get a background check with a reputable person and then they wouldn't have to pay the fee.
It's a problem we can look at coming. I'm just saying it's, and again, I'm not, it's not that big of a deal, just making the point, it makes me uncomfortable setting a precedent on it, but at the end of the day, it's not worth that, that much.
I guess I just had the question, is it a one-time fee or is it every year we get, they get charged?
Every year.
Okay.
Cause you, you can have.
So you're doing a background check to just validate that they haven't, nothing's changed?
Correct.
Just to protect the city.
Right.
Could we change the, or put a provision in there, it's just for a one, a, a one-time fee for new applicants?
Well, the problem is, I may not, I could have been convicted of embezzlement in the last year.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, a, a requirement to pay for the background check. They, they pay for it one time.
No, I think we either charge for it or we don't. I, I, but, that's just me.
I mean, cause from their standpoint, it still gets back to the principle of their, their position that, of, of why they're doing it, they, the dollar amounts aren't significant to their organizations either. We're not talking about a lot of money, it's more of a, it's more of how you view it and apply values related, apply the value from a judgment standpoint to whether, how you case for the fee, it's in a taxpayer or the organization.
Well, if it comes out, if it comes out of the five percent donations or the donations in the end, if we just as a city decide that that's where, whatever, that fifty dollar, the background checks is gonna come out of that line item every year.
You can't do that, there's statutory.
Restrictions on how you use those dollars.
Are we, where are we allowed to use those, that five percent? Obviously, back to like Parks and Rec or something?
Yes.
So it's saving us money on that side?
Correct, usually, um, I believe places that it can be used are generally in areas of public safety and it can be used for youth in Parks and Recreation. I would have to go back and look at the specific statute, but the last, um, time I had a discussion with Mark about this and review the statute, it's very, it's surprisingly restrictive in how you can use the dollars, it's a lot less flexible than if it was a voluntary donation and you can use it for whatever the donation is, donation is for. So, um, if I recall correctly, Andrea, maybe you can recall on this, but you can't use it for a bench at a ballpark because adults might use them, might use the ball field. So it's generally age-specific playground equipment and things like that.
Fifty dollars is today's fee and, I mean, that, there's no reason to expect that that's gonna stay flat forever. Is it a, I mean, is, is it a pretty depth background check? I mean, is that, are we subsisting, using portion of that or is it your direct pass through?
It's a, it's a, it's intended to be, like all our fees, um, it's intended to be a pass-through, so it reasonably covers the time for staff to go through the process. Is it a difficult process? Not particularly, but it takes time, takes time for Sandy to process it, give it to Steve, Steve to take it over, have Gene complete the background check, Steve to get it, bring back, I mean, you're just looking at just basically staff time.
Yeah.
Um, to do it and, and the handoffs and the process, it's not a horribly complicated process, fifty dollars reasonably covers it. The hundred, we felt, um, was, uh, more than we needed to collect to cover our costs.
Is everybody else on board with?
Yeah, I think, I think we just.
I don't know where people landed.
Where are you, where are you at?
Well, I, I'm four.
I'm four.
You were again.
Um, I'm torn, uh, just because there's, you know, I would love to see a lot of things, a lot of my fees go away that I don't have to pay, but I still have to pay them because it's part of my business.
Right.
So I can see both sides, you know?
Well, hey, we waived the license fee for the race, we waived it for nonprofits.
There you go.
There you go.
We didn't waive, we got rid of the license.
Yep, we did.
And that was a lot more.
That was a lot more.
That was a thousand dollars.
On that, uh, waive it.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote against it, I'm fine with it.
So where do we end up?
We got the motion.
So, so our ordinance requires that we do have a charge as set by the council, so the charge will basically be zero.
Some moved, if you need it.
We'll make that change in the ordinance and then as you, when you adopt the ordinance.
Gotcha.
We'll do that as amended.
Okay.
So that was really the one discussion item we had, so unless there's any other questions or changes to the fee schedule ordinance, um, the council would be asked to adopt the fee schedule ordinance as amended.
Some moved.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Back to community development, I guess, did you leave?
No, that, the community development report was complete, so the next report.
Parks?
Yep.
Any questions on parks?
Hey, can I, may I interrupt for a moment? When we were doing the organizational matters, we did cover bank stuff, right?
No.
We didn't cover bank stuff?
No, and actually, Sandy, did they pass, did they make the motion on that and actually do the adoption, or did we just discuss it?
Just discussed it, yeah.
So we still need to go back and, and.
Do the motion.
Complete that.
And we're doing them as all separate motions or what?
No, there's, there's two elements, um, for the items included in the resolution, which would be the official paper, the acting mayor and the depositories.
Right.
Um, we just simply need to fill in the blanks and adopt the resolution with the blanks filled in as discussed. And then for the other items that are done by motion, it, it could be simple as pass the motion with the appointments as discussed.
That's, I just, I can't vote on the bank thing.
Now, one question I did have on that that I just thought of, is as far as depositories, I noticed in the, uh, memo that he mentioned that we might be changing those mid-year, possibly changing one of them or both of them or something, due to what the Zach's recommendations are for where to put the money?
Yeah, we may move items around depending on where we get the best, where we get the best return.
So that, that, that's, that's something that could change later in the year.
I don't think that's the same thing. I think that's two different things.
No, I, I think it was because the way I understood the memo, and I did ask Zach, he said there may be other, another place to put some of the money other than where we're putting it right now.
The bank, through the bank, there's a service that puts that money out there, that brokers it between a number of different banks to get elevated interest rates like brokered CD.
There's, there's different mechanisms within the bank to invest the money, um, different programs and, and what, um, uh, we may look at our investment strategies. So, one of the things that we've done is, the city used to carry the majority of its liquid cash in savings and then we'd make transfers over to checking for cutting checks because the return is greater in savings. What we're finding is currently, the return in savings is just about nonexistent, accounts there, but we're moving all the liquid cash over to checking and then those additional dollars that normally would have been in savings, we're putting into different investment mechanisms through the bank that provide a higher return because those mechanisms that have evolved in recent years provide us nearly the same liquidity, um, that we need, but they provide a better return than in savings. That's what, that, that's what the finance director was referring to.
Okay.
But to Mayor Bob's point, I mean, it does save potential to revisit the official depositories at a later date.
Right, that's what I was looking at, so.
Okay, yes, cause there, there may be other options that come up with regards to how we test the dollars, but we'll come to the council at that time with any recommendations.
Okay, that's, that's what I, what I wanted to get.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I mean, I, I agree with keeping it where it's at.
Second.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, was that your motion?
So.
I didn't think we were motioning it.
Right, so there.
Just discussion.
So there's, there's two actions that are being requested. There would be the organizational matters resolution, which Councilmember Julie's pointed out, he would have to abstain from because it relates to the depositories and he works for one of those. And then the other one would be a motion to make the other appointments as discussed.
Um, but first, we need to make sure we're all on the same page on the depository before we do the organizational one.
Correct, yep, yep.
So is everybody okay with the motion?
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, okay, some motion to approve the organizational announcements as we have discussed. Appointments.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Joe would not have to abstain from that, cause that's.
Oh, I don't have to abstain from that.
No, just from the actual resolution, you would.
Aye.
So then, so then the next action would be to adopt, um, Resolution eighteen zero one relating to the organization of the city of Alco New Market with the items filled in as discussed, from which Joe would have to abstain.
Some moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained. Got it right this time.
I like, I like when you read them, Tom.
It's fun to abstain.
Some moved is good.
Some moved is very efficient.
Okay. We're done with all that now, so we're, do parks, and were there any questions on parks?
No.
Other committee reports, scale is tomorrow, MVTA is until the end of the month. I thirty-five solutions?
Oh, yeah, just very quickly, um, I'm, I know, sorry, guys. So we did have a presentation today, uh, the metro-wide study of the potential Minpass corridors, that, there's a website where if you really wanted some light reading, you could go out and look at the draft of the final results of that. Um, but basically, they've pretty much finished the study and it's, it's posted out there what they, what their findings are, so I don't know if you have interest in, I can just give you my little notes if you want. Noted that I was appointed as vice chair, um, the update on the thirty-five W four ninety-four interchange project, which is huge, one of the biggest things that's obviously holding that back is, uh, the financial aspect of it, it's just humongous. Um, some of the language in the documents that support that had a hard fifty-fifty match for the outlying, the greater Minnesota versus the metro area, and they did, due to feedback that they've received, soften that some, that still says a fifty-fifty, but the language has been slightly changed that, that it's up to fifty percent for the greater MSP and so they, they, you know, they appeased a little bit on that. Uh, legislative update, the economic forecast is a hundred and eighty-eight million in the red. Um, apparently, if, the budget would balance if the Fed passes chip, and I'm not sure how that plays into it, but somehow that magically balances if that happens. Um, orange line, uh, the cost to build that has, has been stable at the hundred fifty-one million. The Lake Street, uh, station and the twelfth street ramp are under construction currently. I thirty-five, um, the heavy construction that we all know is coming is really gonna happen this summer, like, big time. Um, ramp closures downtown, that is on track, I know when I say summer, it's early spring, it's May, it's on track to start in May. So, one of the things we were discussing in the meeting today is, how do we get the information out to the general public and to the cities and the county, I mean, just how do we get people informed on what's coming, when it's coming, what's the impact, what are the alternate, just all of that information? And so, um, I thirty-five is looking, our alliance is looking to beef up the website through some collaboration with some other organizations with kind of a scale-type thing, right? You leverage other areas and, um, maybe build some links in that to get to pertinent sites, but that's all underway, but it's.
Does Mindot get involved in that communication effort?
Well, so, Mindot has the information, but no, do people really know how to get it off of Mindot? And my comment back was, well, do people know to even go, that there is an I thirty-five alliance? Probably not.
I, I asked the, you know, if there's a lot of construction in Lakeville right by my bank and, you know, to Mindot's credit, they were pretty proactive about getting out, holding meetings, showing match, what was going on.
And that will happen, but let's face it, it's already January, this is coming in May. If I were a business and, and there was significant, and that's not to say that communication hasn't happened with the downtown.
Yeah.
Impact, but I'm thinking of people that have to commute and, you know, people in Alco New Market who maybe work in the city might not have any clue.
Or maybe just have to go to the city.
Or want to go to the store, they want a shopper there.
Go from here to Duluth up thirty-five.
Right, it's just, information is definitely out there, it's just, isn't really out there effectively and reaching the right people. So, that's just a whole churn on that. Um, let's see, anything else important? I don't want to talk a lot, I already have, um, that was basically. Oh, on a side note, sixty-two four ninety-four study, they determined that the four ninety-four, uh, in the study, four ninety-four, it does have greater advantage for the Minpass from West Bush Lake to Highway five. So that's likely to happen, that's gonna be what they call in the tier, tier one or level one for getting things done. And that is all I have to say on that.
Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, let's see, we had our meeting on Tuesday and we have Dawn Whitezel as the new president, Gordon Dool as the new vice president, um, Tim Saduski will be the treasurer and Erin, who is our administrative assistant, will become our secretary.
Tim just can't get rid of that secretary or that treasurer role.
He can, he doesn't have to do much. We have Dawn from beyond bookkeeping.
It's kind of at the top.
That sends everything and basically all he has to do is get it to us and then we're done. That's his job, so, yep, so that's all I have.
How many members does the chamber have now?
Currently, we are at seventy-four chamber members.
Is that Dawn?
It is Dawn.
That's what I thought, you were in the eighties, almost ninety.
Yeah, we were at eighty-four at the beginning of the year, um, businesses have gone out of business or are no longer in the area, so we've been, we're down.
I actually heard good things about our chamber, though. I don't even remember where I was or how the conversation, I don't remember the context, I just remember somebody saying, "But at least your chamber is effective" or something to that.
That's nice.
Yeah, I thought I passed that on.
Are we still having the regular meetings?
No.
No.
So, so right now, Renee and I are going to the board meetings and providing.
But we've been going to those.
Correct, yes.
And issues, or there are no issues, communication's still effective and we're not waiting for a letter to come in nine months or anything?
There will be no letter that I know of.
Did you know the last one?
I did not know the last one, and I wasn't too happy with them when I found out and I went to a board meeting, but it's done now, it's over.
Sorry to bring it up.
It's all right.
Regional council of mayors was Monday and it was a joint meeting with the ULI advisory board and they had people from the university talking about autonomous cars and, uh, you know, Excel Energy and housing. And apparently the big that talk, big thing was the autonomous cars. The university is predicting basically in fifteen years, we won't be able to drive a car.
That's aggressive.
That is very aggressive.
They think it could happen even quicker than that because of cost and.
And so what is, how does that impact the council of, of mayors, the autonomous car?
Because of infrastructure, uh, the, the autonomous cars will be using supposedly much less, the, the lanes will be narrower, there will be, be need for fewer lanes.
So like construction?
Right, and there was a lot of talk about how there's no planning for autonomous cars at the city level because everybody's still building big streets and.
Well, until they're here, you sort of have to.
Well, yes.
No, 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 I know, but I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking in my head. Sorry, it's something out loud.
But I mean, there, there's no, no, they, they know what's coming, but they don't, they just, the only real variable as far as they're concerned is time and they're thinking less time. And they're going basically by how fast we went from horses to, uh, cars in the cities and how fast that changed. And that was, that was driven by economics because it was cheaper and the autonomous cars supposedly are going to be that much cheaper that, uh, it will, between that and, uh, insurance rates, they figure for a, a car being driven by a driver will increase exponentially to the point where you can't afford to have, drive your own car because the accident rates for driverless cars will drop so much.
I was gonna say so thankfully.
Well, more importantly, not that this is first world problems, but what about, what about affordable housing? I mean, you say housing, I mean, that seems to be a more impactful issue than car stuff.
We need to get the bomb this time.
But I mean, what are they actually talking about? Because I can see the affordable housing stuff, it's starting to percolate in so many different areas and people are starting to actually see that we have none in our state, that we have none anywhere.
And the, the talk on that, a lot of, some of it is size of what our state regulations say that the affordable housing has to be built. Affordable apartments are generally three hundred square feet bigger than what market rate apartments are being built. So it raises the cost considerably at a, at over a hundred dollars a square foot for, uh, the apartment. So with that, it's just, they, they have no answers for that because they can't come up with a money source to actually do it.
It just seems more important in cars.
It does.
Well.
More real life right now.
It, it would be except the, the, the big thing that came out of it was talking about infrastructure and the, what do we do with all the right of way we have in certain areas?
Put affordable housing.
Well, that was, that was one of the things that were brought up, but the problem with that, that they, that they brought up is for it to be put into affordable housing and for somebody to actually put the money into it, they have to know that building is going to be there for fifty to a hundred years. And is that right of way going to stay, stay that building for fifty to, you know, there's all kinds of typical government problems. So.
Sorry, we're not beating up the messenger, it just.
I know, I, I listened, I listened and I can say I did a lot of laughing and kind of giggling under my breath and so did.
I thought we were going back to the horse.
You'll have to hire the guy to walk behind your horse. But, no, it was, it was interesting and, uh, but the, the, the big thing is, a lot of businesses were there, a lot of developers, I sat with two developers that had worked in our area years ago. And now they're, after talking to them, that, well, we, we'll have to come back and look and see what's going on in your city if things are starting to move. And I said, well, you're welcome to come and we'll, we'll try to accommodate you the best we can. So that was the regional council. CCEC.
The only thing is we have a meeting next Tuesday and we start twenty-eighteen events. So start planning for what is involved and what we can. And also not to really think about grand marshal for fire rescue day.
It's about, you're about due.
It is due.
Overdue.
Okay, and can I just say this year, if we talk about my convertible and I get it detailed, can we use it?
Instead of saying, oh, back in rain then?
Just say it.
Does that mean you're going to drive me?
Absolutely.
I mean, I guess, rather than being in the, in the.
Parking lot.
Thing with the, with everybody else? That'd be fine with me, I just felt really bad last year. Okay, that's on record now.
I ride in a car with a firefighter and usually a former mayor.
There you go.
Great.
All right. So seriously, on the marshal thing, the more notice, the better, right?
Oh, definitely. People have ideas. That's why next Tuesday we'll be starting to talk about.
So what about somebody like Marty who's put in thirty years of service to the city?
There'd be a suggestion that could, could come up. We've never done that before. Did it and saying we don't have to.
Well, I think last year we even talked about why couldn't the grand marshal be some of the city employees in honoring what they do for the city.
Well, that's, and that's right, and that's exactly right.
Yeah.
So.
A whole department or, you know.
Yeah, I, I, okay. Something to talk about.
The city clerk department?
And I'll drive you both.
No.
Anyway.
Me and my other personality, right?
Downtown Improvement Committee.
No meeting.
Getting notifications that it's canceled.
Yeah, that's a good.
What's going on with that?
Get notifications that the February meeting was canceled.
No, I canceled the other one. February fifth is still on, she's still being canceled.
It said canceled, okay. The email I got said canceled and it was for that meeting.
There, there was a straggler previously, you should still have another one.
Yeah, there were two, so I deleted one. I don't have the one on there for Monday, February fifth.
Okay, I'll resend it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I've just been getting all those tons of cancellation ones from you and I'm like, what is going on?
You might as well cancel it though, because the day after the Vikings win the Super Bowl and why don't you guys just thank you?
Well, the parade won't be immediately after.
No, but it's, we're gonna be up all night, oh man.
Hey, we should, we.
Didn't make a.
There should be a thirty for that.
So, so can CCEC plan a Super Bowl thing?
Oh, God.
Not this fast, holy cow.
I meant for us. I'll have a party at my house, big screen.
Okay, fifty by thirty, um, the only thing I've got to report is we've been canceling all the meetings for January because they've been.
And, well, because of the February meeting rates.
Because, because of the February Izzy.
Izzy, yeah.
Yeah, it, uh, which, they have the date set, but they still don't have a location, which.
We, we did have a meeting.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I, but I wasn't at it, so. But I talked to some people after, I had a work thing get, the time get moved on me, but I talked to some people, um, outside the meeting, I mean, it, or that were in the meeting afterwards and just trying to pull my notes away. Uh, it, it does look like the, kind of the next steps that group's doing is looking to establish round tables with different area, different sectors of the community, a civic one, a employer one, a developer one, just trying to get their arms around what exactly can be done. Because we're, we're kind of at a ceiling right now of just, yeah, well, I can go around and talk to councils and make sure everyone's aware of kind of the dramatic fall off when it comes to affordable housing in Scott County. After that, what do you do? So this is a, so it sounds, sounds like what was discussed on the other day was do we, taking more steps, being more proactive with getting more, more people involved in the conversation that can potentially help.
It isn't actu, actually, it isn't even just affordable housing in Scott County we're short on. There's almost, it's housing in general.
Housing in general and.
Definitely.
But affordable for sure. I mean, the, you know, they, I, I saw some of the information that was presented and it's just.
It's staggering.
It is really overwhelming. Um, you know, four hundred and fifty of rental units were built last year. That's half of what needs to be done every single year to keep up with the potential demand on it. And there's, I, I just don't think there's any real good solution for how you solve that problem, but you know what? You know, the employers that, that, that I know are being looked at to have this round table are smart people. Uh, the developers are smart people and I don't know about the civic engagement piece, but I'm just kidding. But getting more smart people and getting more good minds involved and finding different ways to approach the same thing other than just kind of going around to councils and boards and saying, this is why we need, you know, multi-stage housing and that sort of thing, so.
It's, it's a real problem.
It is.
Luckily, our community is doing a little bit for it.
We are, we are. Including the prior link, I mean, they, they did create a number of rental units. Now, how affordable they are, that's maybe a little bit of a different story, but it's.
Scotty's got a big rental unit going in, but it's not going to be affordable.
I mean, the, yeah, the vacancy rate was like one point two percent or something like that. I mean, it was so incredibly low that, yeah, anyway, that's my housing.
Discussion by council. We've got, uh, item A for veterans memorial.
So this is a topic that has come up historically, um, back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Um, the Parks Commission was actually working with the local veterans organizations about putting a veterans memorial in way near park. At that time, there were state, there were grants available to help fund the construction of these types of, um, uh, memorials. And, uh, they were working with veteran organizations to get something done. Um, they had gotten to the point where they actually had selected a location, they had a design, they were to the point of working on the funding. And at that point, um, it kind of stalled out. Uh, Lonsdale was looking at doing the same thing. Those veterans organizations were based in Lonsdale. Uh, there were concerns about competing grants and what happens if one gets it and doesn't. And so it kind of stalled out at that time and it never really, um, the, the organization's never really engaged on it at that time. Likewise, the city didn't go out and, and proactively reinitiate the discussions either. Um, in subsequent years, there'll be, there have been occasional questions about maybe we should do something, maybe we should do something at Pete's Hill, uh, with the Downtown Improvement Committee, they talked about maybe we should try and do a veterans memorial somehow downtown. The topic keeps popping up every once in a while, not in any organized fashion, but the question keeps getting asked. Um, at the, uh, project staff meetings, you brought up the topic about is, is this something we should do something with? And out of that discussion, um, Joe and Bob asked to have this item placed for council discussion. Um, to keep the discussion kind of focused, um, the intent was not to go over what the past proposals were, what the past design was or where it should go. But really more of a discussion about what the city's role should be in this process. And so I proposed to the council four basic questions. Um, does the council support a veterans memorial? If so, should the city take the initiative in moving it forward, basically getting the ball rolling, putting the stick underneath the boulder and starting to roll it down the hill? If so, to what degree and what level of resources the council comfortable allocating to that effort? And we're talking planning only, we're not talking about building it at that, that point. It comes down to what, where, and you figure out how to pay for it at that point. And then the last of the four questions was, and what priority would the separate have relative to other initiatives, issues, projects and responsibilities, um, for the city and its staff? So.
And that was the biggest piece. I, you know, I looked at Bob and I don't think Bob was disagreeing with me that, I don't think anyone on this council is going to say, no, we don't want a veterans memorial. But with, you know, with what we saw last year with all, all the different band with issues, as Tom would say, um, where do, if this is, how much is this something that we as a council want to do? And how much time and energy and resources do we want staff to be spending on it, which is a priority question? So Bob, would you add anything or disagree?
No, I, I had agreed with that and I think that, I think what we should, my, my feelings are it is, I mean, last year for, we had the veterans as our grand marshals. And if, if a veterans group would approach us, or we could put it out there that we're willing to help with that, but as far as us putting time into it until we're really approached by somebody that wants to kind of help spearhead this. For us to ask our staff to put more time into it to try to promote it, to start it, at this point, I don't think we have the staff time.
Yeah, I don't.
I agree.
Unfortunately, I, I agree as well.
Absolutely, a hundred percent. I think we spent more time on it than we should have because I, this is the first I've ever heard of it. So, I mean, we don't even have the push out there, so I think until an issue is brought forth, I think, and then, you know, they would be bringing it through the proper commissions and everything else, but I don't think we need to leave it.
It came up in the Downtown Improvement.
And then I think they keep, it keeps going that way and if it keeps gaining momentum, then it's naturally going to come to us to help and then, you know, the city would be pulled into it, but.
Maybe it's something that goes on the Elko side, right?
Originally, originally when they did the downtown, a study for downtown Elko, a veterans memorial was included in that. I don't know how many of you have ever seen that, but it's.
What other?
There's, there's lots of, I mean, we can't initiate everything for everybody. It's, I mean, we have to, we can support these things. But we don't have to be the driving force between, behind everything.
And I'm going to support it, I'm going to push, but not necessarily push the city to be doing it. Um, I think there's a ton of residents that would really like something like that. And I quite frankly think there's the money out there and the willingness to spend the money to where it doesn't have to be a big financial commitment, but, you know, we only have so many employees. So, and we have a lot that we ask of them, so, um, I'm going to try to be beating the drum a little bit on that, but at this time, I kind of agree with everyone else. It's probably not something we should be spending a lot of staff time on.
When I think if it comes up again at the Downtown Improvement Meeting, we ask that individual, are you ready to spearhead this? Do you want to gather the information?
No.
No, Jean mentioned it.
But, but that's a, that's a good point, is that's where it's most likely to come up in the near future and all of us then look to the city and how should we, how should Joe, who's on the committee, and me and Sandy, how should we respond to that? Topic.
I think if.
You should. It should be me and, well, Kayden and I are on that committee. We should be the ones saying, and it, every ti, and this is going a little off track, but every time it becomes Tom saying, no, we don't have the resources to do it, that's not a, but, that's not helping anything. It's, it, this is a council decision, so it should be us saying, look, we asked a lot of staff, we can't ask this at this time, we need them doing other stuff, so.
One thing you might be able to do, there are a couple other groups in other cities that have spearheaded these and will do them forward. How it might be worth getting contacts and I could pull maybe one or two for you and then maybe you could direct them to talk to some of those groups.
It sounds good.
That wouldn't be that much time for Tom to just get ahold of them and pass on the information.
Well, no, 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 we'll pass it to the people that we're asking for. We would do it or we would pass it to them.
Right, I mean, there's been very nice memorials that have gone in in recent years in Lonsdale and Farmington that, that were successful efforts. Again, I would agree with Councilmember Julius. I don't think funding is going to be the issue. It's the organizational part of it that's going to be the, probably the biggest challenge of the whole process.
And that's the part that takes the most time of staff.
Right.
Maybe some of that other things that need to be taken care of by staff. Right at this moment.
So we're in agreement then?
Yep.
Any other discussion by council?
Uh.
Go ahead.
Annual, I would like to propose that we have an annual discussion about reasons for the council. Just as a topic of conversation, and whether anything is or isn't done. It's something that wouldn't be, you know, in place until the next year. But I think it's something that's at least worth having a conversation about, so I propose that we add that as an agenda item on a near-term meeting. What are the people's thoughts on that?
I would be against it.
I would, I would be against it as well, but but I don't.
Right, well, that's all I'm asking, is that it be a discussion, not that it, not that, I mean, that's what the discussion would prove out year after year, right? I just think it's something that's worthy of a discussion each year. So, unless everybody, unless people oppose having the discussion.
I oppose having the discussion.
Okay.
And I do just, so we're gonna go in circles on this every time we have this discussion, I, I don't think we need to have the- I, I don't know what we're gaining by having it be a regular staple item on, once a year, at a certain month on the agenda, I mean, last time we brought this up and discussed it and made a decision, it was kind of randomly brought up, and it was, and rightfully so. I mean, it had been a long time since we had addressed it, but, I don't know, the whole idea of having it as an annual thing that we look at makes me a little queasy.
Okay, that's fine.
But that's me, I'm one of those.
I'm listening, and I'm listening to both sides of this, and thinking how long it was between discussions for that. And the only thing I, the only advantage I can see to bringing it up annually is at least then, it's-
Not subjective.
It's not subjective, it's brought up, and we can say, no, we don't need to do it now, but it's not, not somebody bringing it up, and they're, they're the goat because they brought it up.
And, and I guess my thought process behind it is, at the end of the day, we are an employee. And employees typically have some sort of annual compensation event, as part of their review. Part of your discussion is also a merit, and that type, to me, it just felt like part of a standard thing that is done for employees.
For, I guess I would argue that, in the sense of we're, we're more of a board than employees, and boards don't have that same-
Boards do set their wages off.
Well, they do, I, no-
And so they have discussions.
No board I've, I've seen is, that's a regular standing annual basis, they're gonna look at their salary. It happens from time to time, but I've, I've yet to see a board that does.
Well, I know our board for the bank does.
Our board for the bank doesn't.
So.
You're a family bank.
But I do like the idea of it somehow, you know, like how we review salaries for staff.
I'd be more supportive of that.
I, I'm not, I'm just thinking it's something that should be a regular basis, I'm not saying it's annual, maybe it's biannual, maybe it's once every five years.
I, I like the idea of having it be some, a scheduled topic, so it doesn't just keep getting pushed, pushed off completely.
You don't wanna be that person that brings it up.
Yeah, it's-
I could be at board of that, just not on an annual basis.
So, so are people comfortable with biannuals, so on the odd year, so in-
How about we have this discussion on that?
A discussion on a, a discussion on a discussion?
A discussion on the schedule, or whatever.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah.
Or can we do that, do we have to have that as a meeting agenda item to talk about the schedule and talking about? Or can we just say, can we just say, we'd like to do it on a biannual basis and give you direction?
I'm okay with biannual.
Yeah, I am too, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, is that good enough?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and just one other item, no, I won't be at the council meeting on the, the second one of February, I will be out of state.
That's why.
So you will be down too, for sure?
The second meeting of February.
The second meeting of February, so the twenty second, I think?
That's comp plan night.
Do we wanna?
That's why I wanted to bring it up ahead of time.
So, so that is comp plan night, there isn't an official action that's being asked from the council, but the feedback is being asked, so provided that everything flows smoothly between now and then.
Yeah.
That, with that caveat, the intent is to basically bring back major portions, or the majority of the comp plan for presentation to the council, and basically feedback and blessing for purposes of getting it ready to go out for public comment.
And when do you think that that would be available for us to provide feedback?
I can't answer that question.
Cause I leave on the sixth.
It, and the council meeting's on the twenty, it's not gonna be out that early. The intent is to, it's gonna be more interactive discussion. Now, knowing that we, I know Renee's response to it is, I really don't wanna present to just three council people, it's something you should have a whole council there if at all possible. So, we could look at having it on the eighth. Is it March eighth?
March, next month.
So, it's some, whatever that, it's somewhere.
Yeah, so we just have to do it the first meeting in March, we'll just move some things around on, on, under a session.
I just wanted to get it out there specifically, so that this could-
That is March eighth.
I'll, I'll talk to Renee tomorrow about possibly moving that a little bit.
That would give her a little more time.
Yeah, she's, Renee's out of town two of February, isn't she?
Uh, she's actually out of town for the next two weeks, tomorrow's her last day in the office for, until the end of January, so she's gonna be out for a while, so.
Tomorrow's her last day until the end of January?
Yeah, I, she will be in over the weekend, more regularly and stuff, because stuff wrapped up that she needs to, but she's, she'll be out of the office for two weeks.
So, anything that comes in for the next couple of weeks, or, you, you get to, you get to work on all that?
Yep.
Oh, did I tell you I needed to meet with you every day for the-
For at least four hours.
For at least two hours a day.
For at least, at least.
Renee's done an excellent job of getting everything kind of, to get the deck squared away, so to speak. We don't, as you heard earlier tonight, don't have any active applications for the February Planning Commission agenda at this point. And she's been working diligently on the Planning Commission stuff for February, so, from that standpoint. So if anything that comes up out of the blue, so if Ryan companies calls on Tuesday morning and says, hey, we need a proposal done by Friday, you know, then I will be switching that idea.
Can you just put a little video camera in your office and feed it to us, so we can laugh?
Well, and this is also one of those where I call Kate, call Stacy up at First Stop Shop, and call Joe and say, hell.
Okay.
Which they'll be happy to do.
Yep.
Yeah, cause I did hear that supposedly you will be getting the, the changes for the Barson's thing. With the money and come and get that, he did say that he was gonna have somebody come and do that.
Yep, so that would, that would put him squarely with plenty of time for the March, for the March meeting.
Any other discussion?
Anybody else going to have that council thing, the fiftieth anniversary?
Um, no.
I've thought about it, but I'm not sure yet.
I already negative.
Anybody going to meet the new senator?
Hmm, no.
No? Tina Smith, in St. Paul.
That ain't gonna last long.
Your old friends, right?
Sorry, I just, there was the, in the regulatory update this morning, you talked about the impending lawsuit against-
And I missed it, I'm sorry, I, I must have been gazing at donuts or something, I don't know, but it was some, somebody who's in office got appointed to some other senate in the, do you know?
I know what you're talking.
I don't.
We've got a state senator moving, moving to lieutenant governor.
Thank you, that's it, and there's an impending lawsuit?
It's a brilliant move on Dana's part, it was awesome.
Yeah, okay, so you have, really glad that I could so clearly convey that thought.
Ah, you just nailed it.
Thanks. Hey, eat enough information, you figure it out.
I know what you were talking about after you-
Truly, I'm done.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?